Would you like, please, stand, point me and salute the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Uten?
It's his wife.
Dear God, take care of any public that might be headed our way. These are important deliberations tonight and give us the wisdom and the courage to make decisions that are best for our constituents. In your name, amen.
Gotcha. Rule call, please.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Director Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uten.
Here.
President James Ferrellman.
President. Are there any late communications?
Yes, Mr. President, there was one late communication. It's a written communication from Mr. Mosher. The board has a copy of those communications.
We don't have any ceremonial issues tonight, okay? Public comments? This is the time that we have public comments. And Jim, I see your... Okay, so we'll wait until we hit this. Hey, let's move along. Consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. General Manager's Report, Citizens Advisory Committee, January 13th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a brief overview of what occurred at the Citizens Advisory Committee back on February 13th. So staffs available to answer any questions.
Any questions of the staff? Mike?
Scott, couple of housekeeping things for CAC. Have they decided how frequently they're going to meet or are they still deliberating that?
Yes, it's gonna be every other month.
Every other month.
Yes, every other month. So six times a year.
All right. The other thing I had heard is that Chairman Kerry is not available on that night.
On...
On the nights, I understand he's now teaching a class at Orange Coast College, which would preclude him from being at the meetings.
Okay, that's, we'll have to talk to him about that and...
Yeah, I would strongly encourage they change their night to accommodate Chair Kerry.
Well, let's find out what the facts are and then we can decide which way to go.
So when would our next meeting be for the Citizens Committee?
February 13th? Or March 13th? March 13th?
I guess the last question is, how are we keeping or how are you keeping track of absences by members? You do that? I'm sorry.
District Clerk, track of that.
Is the vice chair attending meetings frequently now?
Yeah.
Because he had missed several, from what I was told.
It was, the ones he was missing was the ad hoc committees.
I gotcha. All right. Thank you. That's all, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. When will you let us know if it's still on for March 13th for the CAC?
Well, it's still on. Yeah, so I mean, the last meeting, the chair and the vice chair wasn't there, but we still had the meeting. So it's until, we could put that on the agenda for Wednesday, maybe setting a different date for Chair Kerry to attend.
Or I guess the other thing, too, is if they can't change the dates, then they may need to look at appointing a new chair or electing a new chair.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that'd be a good idea or not.
I don't think it'd be a good idea at all.
I think if we have flexibility to change the night, it would be better for the group itself. Because I think he does a real good job of leadership.
He can do it Thursday.
I think, like Jim said, I think they need to, we need to find out what's going on.
Yeah, Tuesday wouldn't be good because that's city council meetings and other things. Thursday would be better if that's an option.
Mr. President, I did speak with Chair Kerry and he did indicate that he will be present for the May meeting, but he will have a substitute teach his class on that night and he should be able to be here.
Do you know what nights the week he teaches?
Wednesday nights.
It's only Wednesday?
For the semester, yes.
So I think that, you know, if we have some flexibility in the nights, if the group has to decide that, not us.
Yeah, exactly.
Group have to decide that.
How many replacements do we have on there? In other words, how many termed out and...
Six.
No.
Six.
Six.
Six or five? Six.
Six.
And when does their termination end? I mean, when is their last meeting? Is it already over?
The March 13th meeting.
That's their last meeting? Okay.
Okay, item two. Stephen, file the Popular Annual Financial Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. So very pleased to present to you and to the public our Popular Annual Financial Report, or PAFR. And basically what this document does, it takes that very large and sometimes difficult to understand CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which describes what we spent that fiscal year. And that document is usually 100 pages, larger documents is several hundred pages. Takes that large document and the PAFR condenses it into a half dozen, dozen pages and uses a lot of graphs to describe what we spent. So any member of the public can clearly understand what we spent. So I'm very pleased with this report and I want to commend Caitlin Tran, Lou Tran, and Mark Davis for their timeless efforts in putting this document, which I think this one's one of the best ones we ever put together. We always, we have that PAFR on our website and we always submit the PAFR to the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization for finance professionals. And we've received awards for the PAFRs in the past two years, so we're hoping to get another one this year. Surprisingly, not very many public agencies prepare PAFRs. I went on GFOA's website, the last year they awarded the PAFR was 2017. There was only three public agencies in Orange County that received the award. We were one of them, City of Huntington Beach and the County of Orange. Out of 2,100 special districts in California, only five received the award and we were one of those five. So it's surprisingly, you know, we talk about being transparent. This is a document that really helps our transparency, that's the public, what we spent. And it really, it surprised me that more agencies don't do that. So again, I want to thank Caitlin and the Finance Department for doing a really great job on putting this PAFR together.
Can we get that in the newspaper? Your statistics?
I'll do, yeah, sure. We, once we won the award, we could put that in there, sure.
Does, do all cities have the opportunity to do that or not?
They all do. All public agencies do. Every, all public agencies. There's commissions, there's JPAs, any public agencies can submit a PAFR, prepare a PAFR and submit for award.
Bob, did you have a question?
On page 11, you've got a typo. At least in my printed version, at the bottom of the page, Caitlin, you'll see that the number of residential customers in the first, the data doesn't line up with the rest of it. So if you can reprint it, I mean, it should be easy just to move that.
Sure.
What does it say?
Well, you, it, you... Do you see that at the bottom of the page where it says residential customers?
Bottom of page 11?
It just, you know, it just came to me moved down.
Got it. Thank you.
But the number's correct. Not the right spot.
The number's correct, but when I saw the number 40,000, I thought, wow! I didn't think we had that many customers.
We don't, we had like 21.
Then I saw the 21 up at five and anyway, I thought it was a wonderful report.
Agreed, agreed.
You know, it's easy to read, the graphics, other than the board pictures, everything looks really good, so. Great, great job. It looks really, it's easy.
I had compliments on the board pictures.
What's that?
I had compliments on those board pictures.
Maybe on four of us.
Thank you.
Okay, good job, Caitlin. Approve out-of-state travel for Caitlin Tran to attend the Springbrook User Conference in Portland, Oregon.
Move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
After what she did with the PAFR, how could we say no?
If you have it printed on like an apron, you could carry it around.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve Director Schaefer's out-of-state travel and attendance of the Waste Expo Conference in Las Vegas.
Move for approval.
I don't know.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I wish I could have went, but I got CIO golf that weekend. It looks like a great conference.
Well, I...
Do you think it needed help there?
Maybe. When I first got the agenda, I don't think it's any secret that I'm highly in favor of us going after commercial. I mean, I really think it's something that we could, and this whole agenda focuses around organics and solid waste that I think we could use to help us with our cause. So that's the only, I'm not a gambler, so I could care less about Vegas. It could be in Tucson for all I care of it.
I think it'd be good for you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Consider approving General Manager's 2019 Performance Goals. Scott, do you want to comment?
Sure, thank you. So every year, I'd like the board to give me direction of where you want to go for the upcoming year and so I very much appreciate the board approves a set of goals. That's why I like to do it in the public as well, so the public knows what... Some ideas that I have, some 10 goals for you to consider now. Again, if you're considering, if you don't like them, you know, please let me know what other goals you want me to... Want to add more goals? Your opportunity to let me know what it'll be for 2019.
I think we have some additions.
I have some comments I'd like to show you. And I don't have to delete one goal or add one goal. I think it's unfair for you to have to do any better than the SSOs and the average, you know, I think you should beat Regen8's average, which is, I think, only one point something. And I think goal number two probably should wait or delete until, you know, we make decisions, I think, later this evening.
Okay.
And, you know, I have a couple of comments on...
Director Uten, if you don't mind, could you articulate what's on the paper for the public since they don't have a copy of the paper?
Yeah.
Unless you put it out on the desk.
You want to, Mr. Mosher? Here, you can give mine to Mr. Mosher if you need to, Bob. There you go, Mr. Mosher. Okay.
Basically on goal number one, what I would suggest is the performance measure be what Regen, I think it's Regen8.
Yes, correct.
Whatever they have. And I think it's pretty low and I don't think it's, I don't think you should be held anything more stringent than that. And number two, I'd like to consider deleting until we make a decision on...
Rates?
The...
Which rate plan we're going with.
Number one or two.
Yeah. Which alternative we're going to go for, for the rate increase. Number three, I'd like to put a deadline on developing a plan sometime in this fiscal year, not necessarily in the fall, you know, but sometime.
Yes.
I put a deadline in there of October 2018.
Sure.
Three, I don't know if that's achievable, you know, I'd run that by you if I haven't yet. And number eight, we've had a problem with Mendoza Pump Station historically with ingress for a long time.
Right.
And I think that unless the board understands that we're going to take action, if we find out that some action is needed, like if the Fairview or if the...
Fairgrounds.
If the Fairgrounds is the culprit, we've known that in the past and we've not been able to do anything. My suspicion is they're the culprit. And we do not allow illicit discharges and there's felony and misdemeanor language is in our permit section and yet we have not been successful over the years. Rob may disagree. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you. I'd like to add that the State Water Board came down heavy on the Fairgrounds for illegal discharges, just what you're mentioning.
Yeah.
Particularly because they're contaminated and that is very helpful to us because the Fairgrounds was non-responsive to correspondence from us.
Yes.
Sent to their chief and assistant chief. So the Fairgrounds is greatly helping us and they've promised to do, to allow no rainwater into the sewer during the winter season. So hopefully it will help a lot. But yes, Mendoza Pump Station is pretty much our worst station for storm water inflow into the station.
Yeah. It either comes from, you know, through the manholes or it comes from the Fairgrounds.
We've plugged and sealed almost every manhole leading into the station, so...
That leaves one opportunity.
Right.
And so, you know, what we need to do is, if we're going to do a flow study, is do it next winter.
Good point.
I'd like to have a study session item on what we want to achieve by going out to do another survey.
Okay.
I'm not sure what it costs, but I'd like to know ahead of time.
Okay.
And I would add a goal to develop a plan with the city of Costa Mesa by the fall to achieve the 75% of the 2020 goal. I think we're close. I think the city is close and I think between the two of us, we'll, to be able to get the city in compliance, it'll take us and them working on a plan. Anyway.
Thank you.
Let's go back to that inflow for Mendoza. Are their manholes not plugged in the past or are they plugged now for the inflow for Mendoza?
Most of them are plugged.
Did we do that or did they do it?
We did it.
Okay.
Well, these are the ones in the street.
You mean on Mendoza?
In our sewers.
I know, but I mean...
Mike, did you have some?
Yeah, I did. Thanks, Jim. I would, I would like to change a goal and add a goal. The one on the emergency operations, I would like to see some incorporation with WeRock to the point that staff and even us, the five of us, do a tour of the facility and it's been a long, it's been at least four, maybe five years since I've been to WeRock. So if you could incorporate something to coordinate with WeRock, some work for us and maybe staff with WeRock as part of your emergency operation. And then the other goal is kind of a personal goal for you, I think, in terms of, I think we're all really proud of what you do with CSDA. Your continued leadership with teaching and, I want that to be a continuing goal. I would like to see it as a continuing goal for you to continue to take that leadership role with CSDA and training new general managers. Talk to anybody from CSDA or people who've attended your presentations, you get pretty good reports and I would like that to be an ongoing goal for you to continue those efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. I had one more and I forgot.
I have a question, Mark. Which location is ReRock in? Is that in, off of 71?
It's, yeah, it's up there in the middle of nowhere.
Not the one in El Toro?
No, it's up off the 241.
The 241?
Yeah, they've got, they have two EOCs. They have one off of Jamboree near Santee Hill Canyon Road.
We've been there.
No, I think you've been...
I mean, I've been there once.
I've been there once.
You've been there once.
I know the board's, the board's been the one in the molten and...
We've been to that one, too.
Okay, yeah.
I've been to the one up in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, me, too.
It's up on the hill up there.
That's the county? There's a county one that's not that far.
It's the Emergency Operations Center that's up...
Off like a 241.
Jean is shaking her head, she knows.
Yeah, you're at the, that's county. That's the big one. That's the mother of all EOCs. The, WeRock has their own, you can see it on a building, it's a little building on nowhere right near Peters Canyon off of Jamboree.
Okay, I've never been there.
So that's, yeah, it's different.
We've never been there.
And I thought of my last one. There's this continuing, I'm going to call it a controversy because I don't know any other word for it, with Lafco and the dues and things like that. I'd like if you could formulate a goal for your continued participation. I know you spoke at ISDOC or you've been working with ISDOC in terms of the rates. So I'd like to see a goal where you're continuing your efforts with whichever committee you're working with. You know what I'm talking about, the Lafco dues?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. I, my understanding, I thought the ISDOC Executive Committee was going to work on that.
Well, it's on the agenda for next Tuesday, but it's pretty nebulous on what they're talking about.
Yeah.
I know one of the directors of the ad hoc committee said he's not going to participate anymore.
I think the general managers are just kind of sitting back and watching how this is going because the elected officials are taking the lead on this one.
Okay, so we can maybe add that later after we see what formulates, maybe add that as a goal later?
Sure.
Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Let me ask the board what their pleasure is in regards to considering the General Manager's performance goals. Do you want to leave it an open session now, we can discuss it, and if we have to go into a closed session? Or do you want to just go into closed session and we can decide whether we want to...
Well, I think the goals have to be in open session, don't they?
Yeah, I was thinking, Jim, that Scott, since we've heard what we said, come back with another proposal, you know, the next meeting. Just, I mean, is that your thinking, Bob?
Mr. President, I was just going to say that the district's goals have to be done in open session, but the manager's goals, if you're setting goals for your manager, that can be done in closed session. Scott has approached you with a item in which it's on the public session because Scott is very much into transparency, but you do have the evaluation later tonight and you can review it there and adjust and then later make a public statement about what the goals end up being.
Okay.
That'll be your choice if you want to go into closed session.
Would those come back to us in March, then, for approval? You were looking for an approval tonight for these goals.
Yeah, I mean, I've got directions from board members, you know, and I can, I know what direction you want me to. I don't know, really, there is a need to go in a closed session. I mean, if you just tell me to proceed what you just told me, well, I'll do that.
We also have to hear from Mr.?
I would, I feel more comfortable going into open session and just clarifying a few...
A closed session? You mean, you want to go in closed session? You want to go in closed session?
Well, it doesn't have to be a closed session, but, yeah, I guess it would.
I mean, it's up, I mean, I have no problem with you talking about this in open session with our performance goals, but if you feel more comfortable in closed session, that's fine.
Yeah, I personally would, just to, you know, clarify somebody...
Because we haven't really seen these before just now, Bob.
Yeah, that's right.
We need to probably have a discussion amongst us.
And you really have two closed sessions noticed already for personnel evaluation and then any possible compensation discussion. So you already have two closed sessions set tonight.
Okay.
And we also have to hear from Mr. Mosher. He has some questions on goal three, five, and six.
Yeah, Jim, why don't you?
Yeah, thank you, President Ferrellman, members of the board. I did ask to speak about this. First, I wanted to commend you for being open about the goals that you're setting. You may wish to modify them in closed session, but the open session discussion is very useful. I live in the city of Newport Beach. The city council there, which is the equivalent of you, has three appointed officials, a city manager, a city clerk, and a city attorney, and it meets in closed session to evaluate them and presumably sets their compensation each year based on whether they attained their goals or not. We in Newport Beach are never told what those goals are, so we, the public, have no idea what the city council is basing their decisions on. So I think this is a much better system. And to contribute to that system, you already have a lot of goals, so I'm not suggesting adding any, but goal number three had to do with the idea, which I think came perhaps from your Citizens Advisory Committee, about trying to extend your residential trash collection to include multifamily dwellings. And my suggestion is the Citizens Advisory Committee is people in the city of Costa Mesa, which is not synonymous with this district. I do not live in the part of Newport Beach that you provide trash service to, but there are parts, all of Santa Ana Heights, as I understand it, and I would suggest you ask the general manager to think bigger than this and include those areas just the same as you would the parts in Costa Mesa. I see no reason for trying to extend the service to multifamily just in Costa Mesa, not in the comparable areas of Newport Beach. And that is my suggestion to modify that one goal. The other ones are just typographic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. So at the end of the day here, do we want to just go ahead and...
Jim, I would ask, I think Scott has Bob's suggestions. We've seen them.
Have we integrated those into the thing?
Just integrate them and bring them back in March and do the approval.
Okay.
The question is, though, number two, to delete number two and that, because we haven't really decided what we want to do.
Oh, I got you.
So we would have to agree on that in public if we want. If we can delete it now or do we want to keep it on the agenda, keep it on the goals? That's the only question I have.
I got you.
Do they all have mine?
No, we haven't heard usually.
Well, I, to answer your question, I agree with Bob that it doesn't make a lot of sense to do the GIS and the CARTs until we decide. If we decide the one way that we're going to do the rates or the other...
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Other than just for our own reference, that's the only reason.
Yeah.
As long as it was like in-house and we didn't have to pay for it.
So we could have Scott come back to us with a refined proposal and then vote on it then?
I mean, yeah, probably, because I think we're going to talk about the choices at the next, in March, right? The next meeting in March, this board meeting in March, is we're going to make a determination.
Until May.
No, that's in May, isn't it?
It's in May.
That's in May.
Well, for the solid waste?
Yes.
In March, the study session will be seeking direction on what option you want us to put on the Prop 218 notice.
And we're going to have a study session before that to discuss more about it, right?
Yeah, that'll be in March, March 12th. Yes.
So, okay. So that, maybe we can delete that for now and then...
Or just leave it in, you know...
Leave it intact.
And discuss whether it should be a goal or not.
Sure. I'll know after March 12th.
And then did Arlene have some also?
I didn't bring it with me.
What?
The calendar. You know, it has its goals.
It's attached, it was attached to that thing we got from Jim.
Should have been attached to you.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Okay.
Are you talking about your?
Yeah.
Well, I think Scott will incorporate some of it.
Yeah, that's what I think.
I mean, do you want to?
You saw it, right?
I know, but do we need to hear about it?
You don't have it?
It was in the, it was in the...
It was in the devotes.
I didn't see it.
So the goals from...
Oh, I didn't see it.
Excuse, I have not seen Secretary Schaefer's proposed goals.
Yeah, that's why I haven't seen it.
You have to say it real fast.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So you're doing a Friday update for the week of confirmation for us. I think that's perfect. And stay active with the S D A. Keep schedule on one-to-one with directors. That's been done. And continue homeless meetings at City Hall and wherever. And continue awareness of C N, C R. Continue trip to, uh, Paris for people, because I think that's really good P R. Who are interested in, um, hearing more. And it's like a V I P trip with city officials would be good for them to go up and see what it's all about.
That'd be great.
That at least they, you know, that might be something that they could appreciate, but then they also might see that, uh, why it would be important for us to take over more.
Yeah.
And, um, then have more information on newsletters before it is printed. But maybe we can, um, talk and find out a deadline. We have to have information to the newsletter people who are doing the newsletter. Because, you know, sometimes we say, we, we want this in it, and it's already done. We can't, we can't do it, so. That would help to have the time that you say, okay, the newsletter's coming out on such and such, and this is the deadline. If any of you have something, please, you know, for me. And, um, directors for items to be included would be in that. Do more P R for people aware of us and how active we are. That, that was it. You know, because I think we're the best kept secret. And we don't do it intentionally, but we just don't do a lot of publicity about how great we are. Just like what the manager just said about, you know, five people out of the whole, you know, California. And we don't go, yay, you know?
Well, do you have a copy of that, Scott, that she presented?
I, I wrote everything down, yes.
Okay. I mean, that'll be up to you, is it up to you to make those determinations if you're gonna put those as goals?
Yeah, I, um, most, most of these are, are day-to-days kind of, kind of stuff, but I, there's definitely a couple of goals in here I can, I can add in. Yeah, no, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, then, uh, let's move along.
Engineers' reports, by chance?
Yeah. But you, you, you had something to say earlier, too, didn't you?
Yes, I did, and it was, I said it, thank you. Under the project status report, a few things to state. Our project for Canyon Pump Station and Force Main. The contractors, the contractor is acquiring the materials, and we will soon have a schedule. The grade five project, we completed phase eleven. That's the final phase. The rest of damaged pipe, or whatever is, needs to be repaired, will be included in the master plan update. We are working on the master plan. It took a year to get the data from Pro Pipe, because the data was so large in a file. They had to break it into three. But we have it, and we have met a number of times. Everybody, we have five people working on it, and all five are doing different things. We had a meeting with the field crew, the Steve, Kano, and Joel Ortiz. We had a meeting yesterday, or the day before, and that went very well. So, uh, we are moving right along on the master plan. Lastly, this Saturday is the neighborhood meeting at nine A M. at President Place Cul-de-sac, where we're going to put up easels, four easels, and have all four options for the president pump station, and have the folks on the street who were invited to attend. We're going to explain the options, show them the existing station, and see what their opinions are with regard to location, and bring that back as information to the board. That will help in our selection of alternatives A, B, C, and D. Can I answer any questions, if there's any?
I think it might rain that day, so you're gonna bring a pop, you know, tent or something, just in case? Because it's supposed, I'm not sure at time it's gonna rain, but it's supposed to rain on Saturday.
That's a good point. I will check into that.
Yeah, we'll have the camera here.
Okay, because I think it, because that's the opening, that's the opening of T-ball, because I gotta go to the T-ball opening.
People don't know exactly where, because one of our logo on it, our logo's on there, so they'll know where to go.
Okay, sounds good.
All I have to report. Are there any questions?
Do you have a schedule on the master plan, the rough schedule?
Uh, we could, I don't have a schedule, but now we can make a schedule, so I will provide a schedule.
Thank you, Rob. One other question, Jim.
Are you attending that, too, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Is it you and Rob, or?
Uh, Steve Connaught will be there, too.
Okay, good, okay.
One of my engineers will be there.
Did, did you have any response from the neighbors, or you just?
We didn't ask for any response. We just, we just.
Whoever comes, huh?
There were twenty-one homes on the street, so we made sure everyone got a notice.
Curious to see him show up.
Okay, just curious.
Okay, let's move along to the treasurer's report.
I think we have one more.
We have, she has one more.
President, item two.
Oh, you're right.
I'm going to move over to the lectern. Alani, could you scroll to the bottom of the report, please, and open the attachment labeled image? That is the standby diesel generator at the Canyon Pump Station that has one of our wraps on it. And just for explanatory purposes, this is the gas tank. That's where all the gas sits. These are the bollards. You can see somebody hit that already. And this is one of the reasons we have this easement agreement. This is actually on private property, twenty-two forty-seven State Avenue. And we renegotiated the five-year easement that, that expired in September two thousand eighteen. We thought we would be under construction of the West Side Pumping Station abandonment in conjunction with Orange County Sanitation District. However, the project got canceled. So we needed to extend this easement. And Alan wrote a very nice easement agreement. And we had property owners from twenty-two forty-seven State Avenue, that's the rear fence. And we also had the property owner at twenty-two fifty Canyon Drive. I wanted to show you this real quickly, because this wall right here, if they're ever going to expand their house and max out everything, they're gonna wanna move this wall to a point in front of the generator. Can you go to the other, uh, slide I mentioned, please? So that, that property line is right here. It's this line right here between the two. That's twenty-two forty-seven State. There's the generator. That wall is about right where this dotted line is. But, uh, really, to do a good job on their property, making the house as large as possible, they would wanna move that wall somewhere here. So the owner of twenty-two forty-seven State did not want a permanent easement because of that possibility to remodel the house or build a whole new house and expand it towards the rear. So we renegotiated the agreement with the help of Scott and myself. Alan wrote the agreement, and we have a temporary easement agreement for your consideration tonight. The terms are parcel A, twenty-two forty-seven State. This is their easement area, our easement area, I should say, for the generator. We're proposing a ten, ten-year temporary easement agreement with compensation for parcel A of ten thousand dollars. Parcel B, right here, the person who owns these properties right here bought this property. So now they're eventually gonna develop this property, this property, and this property into a big development. So they were more interested in reducing the size of the easement. So the easement on this property is mainly for the conduit from the generator. The conduit goes under here and then into the back of our electrical panel, because the pump station is located where the, about where the numbers eighty-eight point eight four are. So they wanted us to increase the size. The size used to come out here and go over there. So we reduced it to just five feet wide. And the compensation for, this is twenty-two fifty Canyon Drive. The proposed compensation is fifteen hundred dollars, and reduce the size of the easement to what is shown on this exhibit. So this is exhibit C to the agreement, and happy to answer any questions. But staff recommends approval of the easement agreement.
Rob, what is this zone right now? Is it residential?
Yes. These are single-family homes on, on State.
Because you mentioned that the owner of one of them might want to.
Right, that's just, these people here, they may wanna put a wall here, but they were okay, and they have already signed the agreement.
Oh, okay.
So they're in favor. We did not bring the agreement to you until it was signed. So we have signatures for both parties, and, uh, we, we spent a lot of time on this, and staff recommends approval.
Who will approve?
I have a question before you do, Bob. Be mine. Can you go back to the picture of the, uh, Alani? I'm gonna put my insurance hat on for just a second. Not that I need a hat. Right behind the pump station, I can see one of the posts for the fence.
Correct.
Which looks like it's just about ready to give out.
Good point.
If that gives out and that fence comes crashing down into our generator, I don't, I don't imagine it'd be major damage, but it could affect. Is there any way we can do something about that void? Fill it in or help them out with something?
I will take a personal look at it, and I will talk with the property owner, Dawn Pfaff. She's very nice and has been reasonable in the negotiations.
Is it Pfaff or Poff?
P F A F F.
Poff.
Is that, are they related to Dr. Poff?
Could be, I'm not sure.
I call it Pfaff. She's never corrected me, so.
You're such a nice guy, I couldn't see anybody correcting you. But I, I just, do you see my concern that?
Absolutely.
That could be an issue, that if that fence and that footing underneath goes, we could have a problem.
I will look into that.
How far away is the fence?
Pardon?
How far away is the fence?
I don't think it's very far. It's only a couple of feet, isn't it?
Well, first of all, this wall is three feet behind the back of the generator.
Three feet.
Most generators, we design with three feet all the way around. We don't need three feet over here, because there's no doors on that side. But doors open to the front. This swings that way, and there are doors in the back. So I will look into the fence and report that.
What about building up the wall? That's a short wall, that's like two feet high, build it up to protect it at the back?
Oh, this wall here?
Yes.
Well, you, as you can see, if you open the doors, they don't hit the top of the wall. So that was part of the consideration.
No, I was thinking just the back, the back of it.
If they don't wanna do anything back there, maybe we could raise our wall up a couple of feet.
In the back of it, so if something falls, it's gonna hit the wall, not the.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a great, great comment. Brilliant.
Just a thought. That way we wouldn't, they wouldn't have to go to any expense. We're, we're making sure that we're covered.
Yeah, and, and I'm not gonna, I, I agree that we should go ahead and go forward with that, but it, just as a.
Not a problem.
Another issue.
Uh, they're very conscientious homeowners.
Is, is that the amount of ten thousand dollars normal for a situation?
It's really a thou, it comes down to about a thousand dollars a year, and it is reasonable. We've, we've had, we actually had it appraised, and it appraised a lot higher for a permanent easement. So we're very happy with the deal that we struck.
I was thinking about this, this amount, and remember when we did the generator over on, uh?
Irvine Avenue.
Irvine Avenue, that guy wanted.
Oh, yeah.
We paid him thirty-five thousand dollars.
So when I saw ten thousand, I thought, we're getting a bargain.
Was that permanent, the thirty-five thousand?
That is permanent.
That was a one-time?
But I went to the trouble to explain everything about her property, so you could understand why she's concerned about it being permanent.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion of Bob's to approve it, the ten, ten thousand and the fifteen hundred.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Let, let's say, and the reduction to the size of the easement, and all the terms included in the easement agreement. I'm adding to his, suggestions to his motion.
That's fine, I'll sec, I'll second that. Extra addendum.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Caitlin, you'll be in charge of the checks?
Okay, thank you.
Nice rap.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Treasurer's report?
I was gonna say, we don't see you very often, you have nothing to say.
I know.
Mark traveling all over the world.
I never do see anything.
Well, good for him. Uh, attorney's report, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, briefly, our, um, little update on our Luna prosecution, our sewer dumping case that our alert citizens, uh, apprehended and, uh, memorialized the event. Uh, the Deputy District Attorney, Mr. Fallon, said that he is in negotiations. They had a pre-trial meeting today. It is being charged as a misdemeanor, so there is the possibility of jail time and a fine. Not suggesting anyone's gonna go to jail, but it's the possibility. And, uh, interestingly, um, because it involves a corporation, both the corporation and the person who did the act both have to have attorneys, because the corporation would, they have a conflict. So they're paying for two sets of attorneys, so that's probably gonna be one of the ultimate penalties, is, you know, they had to spend significant money. And, you know, every time they go in and do a, a pre-trial hearing and all of that, it's, uh, they're paying a penalty for what they did. And, but we're, we're not there yet. They have another pre-trial set for April sixteenth. And we'll give you another report after that.
Art?
Are we getting reimbursed for our expenses to take care of that problem? Or did they already do that for us?
I believe we already were reimbursed.
We already did that, right?
Thanks.
Hey, any questions? Okay, let's move along. Uh, local meetings. Uh, Orange County Sand Meeting, Sand Board, or Sanitation Board meeting was, uh, this week. And, uh, the two highlights are, they transferred eight and a half miles of sewer to the city of Santa Ana, much like what, what they've done with us, you know, transferring the, the big, uh, stuff to. And then, uh, uh, and then technically, they approved the quitclaim sewer transfer agreement between the city and Or, Orange County Sand District. To the, and, and the expenses, uh, that they forwarded to Santa Ana was twenty-three million, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand bucks. So it was fairly significant. And then down in, uh, Lake Forest, they, they basically did the same kind of thing. They, uh, the numbers are different, but. So they're cleaning up, they're cleaning, cleaning their, uh, areas up. One other thing, uh, the property that they bought in, um, gosh, I think it's two thousand and six, uh, in Stanton. They, we, in closed session, we, we approved, uh, an offer on the property, and we're gonna, we're gonna be making money on it, but not quite as much as we thought we were, which is pretty, uh, standard. But at, at any rate, uh, I think it was six and a half million dollars it sold for. That's all I have.
One, one thing to add, too, um, they're re, re-headening a sewer. And it'll bring more flow to Plan Number One.
number one. I can look it up and figure out which it is, but...
I, I thought that was a pretty ingenious project. Living 10 million gallons a day more, 2.1 for P of yours.
That's pretty good.
Art?
We did not meet today. It's next meeting, first afternoon.
His doc, Mike?
That's Arlene.
Arlene?
Yeah. Actually, there's nothing to report on his doc until this next week.
Yeah.
Because that's when they're going to meet.
So much, yeah.
And they're going to talk about the rates and what's going on and get the opinion out of the board of what they want to do with it. And I think I've talked to all of you as far as, you know, what you feel, if we should go with what, what's Doug? No, what's...
Al Nieder.
Al, yeah.
I thought your, your, Scott's report that you gave, I, I was looking at the minutes from his doc today, and you had reported pretty much that the majority of the general managers want to go to the new structure where it's weighted. Am I, did I assume that right?
I, I can't remember. I, I can't remember what I said, to be honest with you.
I just get feedback from large agencies who don't want anything changed. They like it. So, it'll be quite an interesting meeting, and I'll have something more to report on that. And as far as CSDA, I should be up there right now, and I chose to be at the board meeting today. And so, and this happens next month at the end of March again. So, what I'll do is I'll come to our board meeting, and then on Friday, I'll do a turnaround where I'll go up early in the morning, first plane out, and then come back that night. So, I have more to say. Today was the legislation meeting up there and all the bills that we're addressing and what the governor is going to do now and that kind of thing. So, I just, I missed it. That's about it, you know? Oh, and then I went to the government affairs committee meeting. You know, Chamber of Commerce has that one on the committee. It's interesting, the makeup of it, and it's an opportunity for us to see what's going on as far as all the legislators and all the different people who usually have representatives there, you know, from different walks of life. So, that's about it.
Yeah. Any questions?
Art, we already called on Art.
Yes, Jeremy. We had our meeting earlier this month, and pleased to tell you, it was my first meeting as the president of your SDRMA Association. The main focus of our meeting was to, to work on our strategic plan, which we did. It'll, it'll come out next month, I believe. We also talked about rates. As you know, rates are changing. Our property rates are going to be going up about 7%, 7.3, I think, or workers' comp rates are staying level. I think our mod, we're still below 100, aren't we? So, that, that's good. We had a, a very quick meeting. That's how I like to run meetings, is quick and get them over with. It was good. I also, earlier this month, attended the Parma Conference in Anaheim, which is the Public Agency Risk Management Association. And it's a good meeting. They, they had it at the Disneyland Hotel. And the, the last keynote speaker was a guy by the name of Ed Rush, who's a, he was the, in the U.S. Marine Corps, he was the guy who trained the F-18 pilots.
Oh, wow.
And he went through his, really an excellent speaker. I mean, this guy was, was spot on with what he was talking about and reliance on teammates and all the F-18 things. And he, he started off by saying he was not Top Gun because he got in trouble. He was talking about these drills they do, these training exercises they do in the jets. And when he was just one of the regular pilots, he was always in trouble. He says, I didn't have Iceman behind me or whatever the names were from them. But really, a, a really good conference. Wish I had more to tell you about it. But we, in March, we have our Safety Claims Day. You're not sending anybody up, are you, from staff? It's our annual meeting once a year. We bring, agencies are invited to come in. We do our safety training and stuff, and I'll have a report for you on that next month.
Okay. Were there any other meetings qualifying for reimbursement this month?
Arlene and I attended the ad hoc meeting for the, for our 75th anniversary.
Oh, yeah.
And I think we're only going to have one more meeting, then the meet, then the group will be dissolved. It's going to be in March. And I believe that the, when is it coming out in the movies? I mean, at the theaters? Remember, Tina? This comes out, it's already out, I think, already. Is it tomorrow night?
Tomorrow.
So, the four, the first presentation will come out tomorrow night.
Only at Triangle Square? Is that where we are?
All of the theaters in Triangle Square.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's nine theaters, I believe.
Cool.
So, it'll come out at all of them before the movie starts.
Guess I'll have to go to the movies.
And we have four different segments that are going to go through the next number of months based on our time, schedule of things happening at the district. So, I think it'll be pretty good. You guys saw the presentation already, but now they're going to be up, you know, on the show. So, I may go this weekend and check it out and see what happens.
It was, it's a good group, and we're doing really well as far as budgeting things and what we should have, and we'll be getting shirts soon.
Well, it's like a pullover, it's a pullover.
Yeah.
Did we get everybody's sizes already?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and also the Systems Advisory Committee, too. They're going to get...
When, when is the delivery date for those? Is it going to be after the CAC last meeting of some of those people? Or what's the plan for that?
They should be coming in first or second week of March, so soon.
Cool. Okay. Okay. Because we may have to order, if we have, do we have any more people that have signed up to, as a application to be a member of the CAC?
We officially received one application today. We have, I believe, three or four in the pipeline.
Okay, good. Because it doesn't have to be 11. If we had nine or, nine, that'd be okay.
Sure.
But hopefully, we get some more, though.
Then our trash trucks are going to come out with our 75th anniversary soon, and we'll see that on there.
Are we putting logos on our trucks or doing anything on our trucks?
Yeah, yeah, we were putting, if they, if they stick, if they're still, you know, they're, they're making cars now, they're, they're not made out of metal anymore, so sometimes they don't stick. Yeah. Oh, aren't they? They're not made out of metal?
And for all the activities that go to...
Are we, everybody driving Corvettes? Is that what you're saying?
I do not.
Okay, let's move along. Old business? Anybody have anything that they'd like to, yeah? Oral commu, new business? Oral Communications and Director Comments. Would anybody like to share a thought?
I, I would just pass on to staff, Rob, Scott, whoever was working, they changed, pumps, California Pump Station, they changed a lot of pipe.
Did they?
And my compliments to GSW, oh, no.
GCI.
GCI. They were efficient. They kept the street flow, I mean, there wasn't a lot of interruption for the, the neighbors, and they used their heads because we had some rain right in the middle of their construction, and they opted not to work while it was raining. And I know that was appreciated by my neighbors and, you know, obviously, being the nosy person I am, I watched them a little bit and talked to some of their guys. They represented themselves very well, and they got the work done, so.
Yes, they're excellent, and at this point, they were the ones who put in the Harbor Force main, the Victoria Force main. They've, they've done quite a few projects for us. They're our top contractor right now.
Did a nice job.
They're very professional.
I had, I can't, I had, I don't know how many neighbors called me wanting to know what was going on, obviously, and it was easy to tell them that we were improving, and they did, did a good job.
It's stainless steel piping.
Right. They showed me some of the piping. It was...
That's the only way to beat corrosion.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Oral, let's see, Oral Communications and Director Comments. Does anybody have anything?
No. Just wanted to say that on our maintenance yard, we're going to have a 75th anniversary banner on there. It's almost here. I'm just...
Okay. At this time, we're going to adjourn to closed session, and we'll report after the session's over. Jim?
Mr. President, hey.
Jim?
Before Mr. Mosher speaks, I'll, may I just add that we're going into closed session on all the items as listed in those code sections above? And there is a, was a suggestion by Mr. Mosher that we were not properly in closed session under number one. And I'll just add, before he speaks, that we are properly in the pending litigation subsection for our discussion tonight, and I have been in several discussions with the deputy district attorney this morning about it. So, we're, you're properly in closed session. But you should hear Mr. Mosher's comments.
Thank you, Alan. Jim?
Yeah. Thank you, President Fairman and members of the board. I am not a lawyer, but I was surprised to see this item being noticed for closed session. The, the item has to do with the results of the litigation between this district and the regional water board over the major sewer spills that we had a few years ago. My understanding is that the Court of Appeals has affirmed the decision made by the Superior Court, and the time to do anything about that appeal having been, the decision having been affirmed, that the time has run out. Today is actually the end of the 30 days after the case was published. And so, since this district prides itself on transparency, I wanted to point out that all the Brown Act allows closed sessions to discuss certain matters with your lawyer. It never requires you to do that. And in this case, I have possibly heard something different than I would have gathered from the notice in the agenda. But it's really hard for me to understand why this would, why the allowed exceptions would apply to this. So, I wanted to bring to your attention the actual language in the Brown Act. To, to meet in closed session about litigation, it has to be pending litigation, which means either it's ongoing, which is not the case here as far as I understood the case that's numbered, or it could be a potential for future litigation that's also regarded as pending. But whether it is pending or not pending, what you would hear in the closed session has to be something that if the public heard it in the open session, it would somehow prejudice your case. And since this case, as far as I know, is done, it's closed, the decision has been rendered, I have trouble imagining what you're going to hear in closed session is prejudicing this particular litigation. I can't make the connection how anything here could change the outcome. And then the other comment I wanted to make is about the decision that the Court of Appeals made, and I read that decision. The theme of what they had to say, which seems to be what the Superior Court said, was that the district should have tried to negotiate with the board of, with the staff of the regional board, which other agencies have apparently done, and managed to reach some kind of negotiated settlement. And then when an agency chooses to ask the, the regional board itself to decide what the penalty should be, the agency is essentially rolling the dice and has to go with whatever the decision is that the board, regional board makes. So, as a member of the public, I would be curious if that theory is correct. Did, did the regional board staff offer at some early stage to reach some negotiated settlement rather than taking the matter to the whole board? And did they offer some lower number than finally came out of the, of the hearing before the board? The appeals board, appeals court, and apparently the Superior Court, thought that in all the other instances of spills, that such a negotiated settlement had been reached. So, I would be curious to know, in the interest of transparency, whether that was true in this case or not. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I...
Alan, would you care to respond?
I could just, I'm not going to respond any further about that we're going in properly into closed session because I think, you know, sometimes transparency is in the public's interest and sometimes it's not. And this is one of those occasions where it's in the public's interest not to be transparent so that you don't disclose any downsides in your, in your position. So, that, it's one of those cases. But I can comment on what Mr. Mosher alluded to about, did we negotiate and, or try to negotiate with the regional board? And I can assure the board, as, as the board knows, we did negotiate with them. We tried very hard. We went up there and tried to negotiate, presented all of our cases, and Scott and Rob helped and had a lot of evidence, and we, we did our best to try and get them to lower the fine. And when we walked out the last day, the administrator said, unless your offer has the, starts with the number four, $400,000 plus, we have nothing further to say to you. So, therefore, they forced us to take it up on appeal. I'm sorry, in a hearing before the regional board. And this, this board directed us to do that, and we did. And we were able to get it reduced by 40,000 probably. So, that's the, that is the number we were able to get by taking it to the, the trial. Once we got to the trial, we thought they didn't properly weigh the factors, and we took it to the trial court, and then we took it to the Court of Appeals because we didn't think they'd properly applied the findings. The trial court and the Court of Appeals disagreed with that, but we did, in fact, go through the entire process and tried our best to negotiate it, and then did get a better result by going through the trial, the administrative hearing. And, but we did not prevail in the trial court and the Court of Appeal. So, anyway, we are left with that judgment, and I will talk more about it in closed session to you, but that's the only thing that I think is appropriate to share other than in closed session at this time. Maybe in a month, we'll be able to tell a lot more.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. At this time, we're, we're going to adjourn to closed session if everybody would leave that's supposed to leave.
Are we going to go back there?
Yeah. We are back in open session, and I've been given the authority to negotiate with our general manager. That's it.
And, and given instructions to the general manager to negotiate with the employees.
Yeah. We give the general manager authority to negotiate with the employees as well.
Before you adjourn, I, can I, Scott, a couple of things I'd like you to, for a possible future study session. One of them was that email you sent us about the PERS contributions for board members? If we could talk about that, sooner, sooner the better.
We're going to do it.
Okay. And then the other thing is, do you remember when we were raised to our 295 stipend? How long ago was?
I don't remember.
Can you find that out?
It's got to be 10 years.
I don't think, not, not long. It's probably, I'm just thinking it was three years. Yeah.
Five to seven years. It's longer than that.
Five or six?
Five to seven.
That's all, Jim.
Okay. Good job. Good seeing you, everybody. I don't need to ride home tonight, Bob. I'm driving. I passed my driver's test.
See you guys in the morning.